And we're back. Thank you for rejoining us, candidates. So this next part is a segment that provides questions that have been given to us by the community. We've actually got quite a few. We are going to select the questions that, again, have no redundancy in what has previously been covered, those that are somewhat business or economic related, and no topics that would cause a council member to recuse themselves. Additionally, we did get a lot of varying questions, but again, we stayed focused on business and the things that are important to the chamber. So...
What was the other thing I was supposed to announce?
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to let the audience here know, and those that are watching at home, that a questionnaire was given to the candidates, the council member candidates and the mayor candidates. These consisted of questions that have similar themes of what's been asked tonight, but in more detail. All the candidates have returned those questionnaires to us, and they will be published, the answers will be published about midday tomorrow on the chamber's website, and also, they will be submitted to the Star for potential publication. So let us begin. Okay, the first question is going to go to Mr. Doring.
Thank you.
"Many of the businesses on Main Street have different opinions on what Main Street needs. How would you help facilitate a compromise, and how do you see our downtown in 10 to 15 years?"
Well, thank you for that difficult question. I don't have...
That was from, that was from the community, by the way.
Let me try that again. There you go. Thank you. The approach I've always taken with these complicated issues is to bring people together and plan. Planning is the key to St. Helena. All of these issues, planning and zoning, can get us together to work through these issues. Planning gives people in this, in this community, our residents and our businesses, a voice in what they want to see in the downtown area. My vision, or my hope, is that we have a vibrant, successful downtown where merchants are making a lot of money and that people are flourishing. We really need to focus, though, on the general notion of planning for our community and getting our general plan completed, and then getting our zoning ordinance completed. Diversity is always good. This notion of being reactive to applications as they come forth is not good for the community because it creates so much dissent. If we already know what we want, that's a good thing. We have to be proactive in our approach to business. We cannot wait for businesses to come to us. We need to decide for ourselves what we want, not only in the downtown area, but throughout the larger business area that goes beyond the downtown area. If we want resident-serving businesses, we need to figure out where they best can go. They don't have to necessarily be in the downtown core. We already have some there. Of course, they should stay. But there are other areas beyond the downtown core where we can zone for those residents, create incentives, as Mayor Navarro talked about, to have them come. We can do this with smart planning, cutting-edge planning, and not regulatory planning. That's how a community gets together, and I, again, I'm willing to talk with members of the chamber, businesses, bring the vast amount of knowledge I have in representing businesses, being involved in government, LAFCO, NCTPA, all of the government issues, the government relation issues, business and government. My strength is being able to pull people together. That's why I'm running, and that's what I'm committed to. So yes, vibrant, busy downtown that's well-diversified and successful. We do not want to have closed doors in the downtown area, so, and I'm very hopeful that that's what we will do. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Scalotti, a follow-up, please?
Sure. So again, just downtown Main Street in 15 years, kind of an idea. Well, I can tell you that ever since I was a little kid, I mean, I mean, St. Helena has changed a lot as it was. I remember there was, you gotta remember when my dad was growing up, there was 10 bars alone on Main Street. Now, that's not diversity. So, you know, we come a little, come a little ways. But you know, what I see is, what I see is, is an absolute vibrant, diverse mix of businesses that are not chain stores, but that might be businesses that have other great experiences in other markets that can relate to us, that can relate to that luxury quality, you know, that might be in a couple of other different markets, but they're not a chain, but they just really run an amazing business. Those are the kind of small-cap companies, like, that I would hope to populate our retail stores on Main Street. And really, they're gonna have to be because the rents are gonna keep going up. I mean, you know, it's, people forget that landlords dictate pretty much also who goes in there, based on what kind of rents they're asking. So, but I see a time when we have a couple of hotels that are open where people are shopping into the evening, who are walking, who are biking, and our downtown corridor is, is abuzz with economic activity, not annoying in its, in its scale, but something that is, that is, you know, that is really human-scale and easily to approach, not where people are just really angry that they can't find a parking spot, you know, and, and that's what I see. I see the opportunity for mixed use especially, and maybe even the potential of, you know, new real estate offices being upstairs, you know, or, or maybe, maybe professional offices being moved to mixed-use areas that don't necessarily, oh, my, my time is up. But I want it to be vibrant, beautiful, and, and happy.
Great picture. Thank you. Councilmember White.
Can you repeat the question one more time? It was pretty complex.
Yes. "Many of the businesses on Main Street have different opinions. Many of the businesses on Main Street have different opinions on what Main Street needs. How would you help facilitate a compromise, and how do you see our downtown in 10 to 15 years?"
Well, I think we need to have, have the strategic plan, and it's spelled out, we added a section in the economic sustainability element that, that calls for an economic sustainability strategy, and that would be a tool that would, that we would create, that would have measurements that we can, I guess, first have a plan and then have, have a vehicle for, for measuring how the policies have been shaped and, and what the successes are, and also modeling for, for future activity, and, and to see how that all fits in. So, I think that I agree with, with Paul and Mario. We need planning. We need to have a process that, that is proactive, that moves, moves ahead of the game of waiting for the next applicant to come in, and, and then we all wring our hands over whether or not, you know, we need another jewelry store, another wine tasting room. We, we need to get ahead of that, and, and it's, that's not changing the market forces, that's being proactive to, to coming up with solutions of collaboratively how we want the downtown area to look. In 15 years, I have no idea what it's gonna look like because 15 years ago, I would have never thought it was gonna look the way it does. So, we'll see.
Thank you. Mr. Doring, your final comment, peering into St. Helena's crystal ball.
Both councilmembers have made good points. It's very difficult to articulate that. I hope we have a great community that our residents and that our businesses are thriving, and we're working together, we're compromising, we're, you know, that my kids are here to enjoy what we have, that we've resolved some of the tremendous traffic congestion issues that we have that are really impinging on the downtown right now and making it uncomfortable for both residents and visitors. Those are things that we need to work on. There's a whole, that's a whole new topic, I know, but in general, I agree with both councilmembers on this topic.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to our third question, right? Number two, okay. This is gonna begin with Councilmember Scalotti, and it's another easy one, from the community. "The Planning Commission reviewed plans for the Adams Street project several years ago, all rejected by the council. What do you see on Adams Street?"
I love this topic because here's, here's what I can tell you about the visioning statement of Adams Street as I know it, is when that, when those sketches that people have seen came out, those are highly influenced by developers who wanted to build apartments there. They helped draw those things, and it included us giving them the land and giving them a couple million bucks to build it out. Hello? Like, I'm not, I'm not totally subscribed to that. I can tell you that. All right? So if a developer comes in and wants us to give them a bunch of free stuff, and that's the visioning statement, now, I'm over-exaggerating, okay? A lot of, there's a lot of community input on it that it should be mixed-use in some ways, there should be community elements, and there should be, there should be things that we can enjoy together as a community. What I see for that site does not include housing or offices, and frankly, I don't even think it includes City Hall. I think it should be something that embraces, that, and this is, this is after talking to lots of different people, you know, in the last two years especially, because I would, I would get asked this a lot. And, and so what a lot of people are telling me is, we need a cultural-type center that's a quality building that we can actually gather, that's not just the Native Sons Hall, even though we love the Native Sons Hall, and we need expansion for the library, the Historical Society, and the, the Robert Louis Stevenson Museum. These are incredible assets that are very community-oriented. I would prefer that that place, and especially with the history of those vines, when Larry Turley came in and gave us that wonder, you know, just his comments on the history of those vines, I'd like, I'd like to make sure that as little of that vineyard as possible is removed to preserve something that is really a world-class site that we have as a community. Now, doing something like that doesn't mean we just go into debt or we do it on some bond. You can actually finance something like this in a semi-commercial way, where if we wanted to build a $5 million building that was a community center, we could cash-flow the building with 60 weddings a year, and it would pay for itself, and then we'd have 300 days out of the year where we get to use it as a community. So that's how my mind works when I think about real estate, when I think about cash flow, when I think about how can you be creative with, with a site that brings a maximum return to the community. Well, if I have an apartment there, sweet, but that's not the community, that's one guy. And so I like this idea that I've been hearing from, from, from residents, from people in the neighborhoods, people that I talk to on a daily basis, which is, hey, let's make this something that the community can enjoy, and let's lock in this very special place, and don't make it the office building across the street. You know, I go to the ETS laboratories to run my samples, like, it's a nice, it's a clean building, but do we want that right there? No, we deserve something better than that, I think, as a community, and that's what members have told me, too.
Thank you. Councilmember White, follow-up, please?
Well, since the presentation of the Historic Society, we formed a small committee, Greg Pitts and myself, and to get together with the Historic Society and take a look at, at different ideas of where the Historic Society could have a home. And so we've started that process, and my vision of, of the civics, of the Adams Street property is pretty much a full-on civic center that would anchor our, our cultural heritage in, in our history museum, our library, the RLS museum, some venues for, for our recreation department, and then also some kind of venue that would, that would be revenue generating, that would, that would host conferences, weddings, entertainment events. I think it's a very doable idea, project. I think, you know, with, with the type of funds that, or revenues that you get from some, you know, some really world-class venues that, that you can have conferences and weddings and such at, we could, we could generate quite a bit of income. And also, I agree, you know, being a businessman, you, you have the, the income flow to be able to go out and, and borrow money for it. I think it, it would be, not a simple thing, but it would be doable.
Mr. Doring.
Thank you. So I want to take a little bit of a different tact here. You know, it's easy for someone to ask you, well, what's your vision, councilmember? And really, that ignores the process entirely. My vision is irrelevant. It's the vision of the community that is most important. I have ideas for all kinds of things in the world, but as a city council member, you have to respect the process of the community. Because if I announce my idea, I'm basically telling the community, I've already made up my mind. And if I announce my idea, it disrespects the whole process that went along when folks got together and created that visioning statement. That visioning statement has a lot of things on it, community-oriented buildings, and it included some affordable housing. You know, if the consensus of the community has changed, then we have to recognize that and move forward, and maybe that vision statement evolves. But my vision is irrelevant. It's the community's vision that's relevant. Now, with respect to development of the property, the city council was the one who invited the RFPs for these developers to come. It was an invitation by the city of St. Helena to bring these folks forward, and they came forward. There were six of them, and they were all rejected. I was not on the council then, I don't know all the ins and outs of why it was rejected, but if you're fully committed to doing what the community wants and you go through that process, I would have maybe rejected, I don't know, but I would have probably reached out to each of those developers or the, the Planning Commission and said, why are these RFPs deficient? And how can we bridge that gap to make them more palatable to the community? Reduce the number? Maybe that's the way to go. Whatever we do on that beautiful site, which we've held for 14 years, at $3 million of our hard-earned money, it should be community-oriented, for your families, your generation, your grandkids, let's put something there that the community can benefit from, and we also need to be sure that it's revenue-generating. So there's a whole host of things that can do that. Thank you. I know there's stop.
Thank you. Councilmember Scalotti, a final comment?
Sure, and I have two minutes for that. Well, I can say that, you know, I, I know that the RFPs that came in, the majority of them included, this is what we can do for you, give us the land, and give us money. That's not cool with me, and I'm just gonna say it, because if you don't have any revenue and they want to give, have them give us away our precious land, that's out of the question. That's just how I feel. I'm not rejecting in any way, you know, the conversation and the importance of a conversation that has to be had, but I think it's a new era. We just, we just survived the Great Recession. We have a different appreciation for a dollar. We have a different appreciation for what it feels like to be in debt, all right? And I think that there's a lot of good DNA from those early meetings, but I think that it's a new, a new understanding, you know? I know that, I know that our families learned a lot in the Great Recession. I don't know about you guys, but I think that any way that we can be cash-positive instead of giving away our resources or giving handouts outright, we need to be financially prudent, and we need to be really intelligent, intelligent about sustainability from a revenue standpoint. Listen, I'm super excited about the next round of what this visioning is gonna look like because the, because the pulse is different. I just feel it, you know, going down to the coffee shop or the model bakery and talking to people about what they want to see. The pulse is just different. So I don't want to live in the past, let's live about, let's live with what we have now, with what we've learned, and then move forward. Believe me, this is absolutely one of the reasons that I want to continue and be on the council again and be re-elected, is we're gonna get to go through this process, and it's gonna happen in the next four years, and, and we're really gonna get to dig deep into this and understand what's best for all the citizens, citizens in the community. So it's really exciting, and I don't have my mind totally made up, but I like the idea of, of not giving away our resources, but rather having them work for us and for our community.
Thank you very much. The third and final question of this segment of the debate will begin with Ms., with Councilmember White, and it specifically addresses you. "With the enormous wealth in St. Helena, and given your statement that you don't want to follow the example of other small towns which have turned their uniqueness into revenue, how will you find the, the resources to deliver the infrastructure St. Helena deserves?"
I'm not quite sure.
Do you want me to reread it?
Yeah.
Okay. "Given the enormous wealth in St. Helena, given your statement that you don't want to follow the examples of other small towns who have turned their uniqueness into resources, reserves, and revenue, how will you find the resources to deliver the infrastructure St. Helena deserves?"
Well, I, I don't think that I was in that statement of the caramelization and, and those comments that, that I was saying that we don't want to have commercial vitality, and, and I don't want to even construe that. What I was saying was, we're an individual community that, that has its own uniqueness, and, and that we don't necessarily have to model ourselves after, after any of those communities. We've got enough entrepreneurship and, and community bonds that, that we can do it in our own way. Definitely, we need to have, have an economic vitality to be able to fix our infrastructure. I think it's important that, that we take a look at hotel rooms because that's the best tax of, of not our own citizens to be able to afford our infrastructure to be worked on and fixed. 12% is much better than our little tiny percentage that we get from, from sales tax or, or real estate tax. So I'm in favor of, of generating income from our visitors rather than taxing our own citizens.
Thank you very much. Mr. Doring, a follow-up?
Do you mind reading that one more time?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No problem at all.
I am.
Okay. "With the enormous wealth in St. Helena, and given Mr., Councilmember White's statement that he didn't want to follow the example of other small towns which have turned their uniqueness into, it looks like, resources, but we're assuming that what they're talking about is that they've been able to turn their uniqueness into revenue sources. How will you find the resources to deliver the infrastructure St. Helena deserves?"
First of all, let me acknowledge clearly that St. Helena is unique. We are different than Calistoga, Yountville, Carmel, and all the other cities in the world. I agree with the passion that Mario has, for example, about the vineyards that we have here and the historic wineries. We go back a long ways in, in St. Helena. The vibrancy and the great wealth of our community starts from the vineyard, goes to the wineries, and everybody comes for that. And so no one can, can touch St. Helena in that regard. The historic downtown that we have, the real downtown that many communities don't have, folks come here for that small-town, authentic experience, in addition to the great restaurants, the hospitality services. In terms of revenue, I, I think we should be focusing on the highest-end hotels we can get that are reasonable and appropriate, given the resources we have at the time. Water and traffic and all these issues and housing are issues of concern for me. If you're, now's the time to do the deals. Folks are coming. The economy's on the move. It's still, still a little difficult to get financing, but I have folks that I know that are moving forward in, in the Napa Valley, looking for places for hotels. We can be strategic, we have to go high-end, and I agree that that's our best source of income, the TOT. Although, we do not suffer immensely from property tax deficiencies here in St. Helena. That is our greatest revenue base. Our property taxes are quite high. We get, I believe it's 2.8 million of property tax, we get about 2.5 million of sales tax, and the current budget for the TOT is 1.5 to 1.7 million. We definitely need to improve the TOT tax area. We need to keep our town authentic, real, historical. That's why people come here. That's our gem, and that's what we should focus on.
Thank you. Councilmember Scalotti, a two-minute follow-up?
Absolutely. You know, one of the eye-opening experiences of being on the council is that you don't get to see on a daily basis, but you get to kind of see when you're in there, is, is how, how dangerous some of our infrastructure situations are, and, and it's not necessarily because it's just, it's a negligence of occurrence council. I mean, blame it on the negligence of whoever built it, or blame it on the negligence of whoever decided that we needed to do that many roads that now need repaving. I mean, you can, you can take it back and back and back to the point where, where you really wonder, why did we expand in these ways without a real revenue model that's gonna justify these type of infrastructures? Well, when I think about building more houses versus something that could generate us money, I would right now be an advocate of generating some money first, you know, because people are always gonna want to build a house here. They're always gonna want to come here. We have this amazing blessing to be here already, but let's, let's like put on our own oxygen mask for a second before we, before we put it on like our kid. I mean, obviously, we want to help everyone, but, but we need to do these, we need to do a couple of these, potentially these high-end projects that are gonna yield us TOT, and we really should consider even some type of real estate transfer tax over the next four years. I, I just, I think that that would could be good. Right now, at $8.3 million budget, you know, we're, we're paving our roads, we're handling things, we're maintaining things, but we really need to build a war chest, so to speak, so that we can handle uncertainties. I mean, I know that when I went up to the dam the other day, I mean, that valve's gonna have to be replaced. The actual spigot that comes out of Bell Canyon is gonna have to be replaced. That's a couple-million-dollar project. I mean, with all the regulations and everything, where's that money gonna come from? We've got to, we've got to start building a real fund that's gonna address just the basic infrastructures, in addition to what's gonna be the frosting on the cake that makes it wonderful to be here, the bike paths, the parks, everything. Okay, stop.
Thank you. Councilmember White, final response, two minutes on the question regarding infrastructure revenue.
Well, I don't know, yeah. I don't know that there's that much more to say. I mean, I think we're all in agreement that, that we need to have new revenue sources to be able to sustain. I mean, we have not actually been able to completely maintain our streets and sidewalks. They've gone into disrepair. They're going further into disrepair. We don't have enough money to actually keep up with, with what needs to be done. So we really seriously have to get moving on getting revenue sources so we can get ahead of, of our roads and sidewalks, and, and, there goes my seat. And, and the rest of the infrastructure that we need to handle.
Thank you very much. So that concludes the questions from the community portion of our debate. We are going to now conclude with the statements of the candidates, and according to the way that the names were drawn, the first opportunity to speak to a prepared question from the chamber will be Mr. Doring. And would you please answer the following question? You will have three minutes.
Thank you.
"St. Helena's economy is dependent upon and influenced by the wine industry and tourism. There seems to be a growing sentiment to drawing a line in the sand between tourism and quality of life. The chamber believes not only that these can successfully coexist, but that it is crucial to find that common ground for St. Helena's economic viability. How do you intend to change the discourse from animosity to collaborative?"
Okay, I was a little confused there. I thought there was gonna be another question. You're, you're talking about the closing statement, responding to that. Okay. Okay, got it. You know, first of all, I reject the premise that there's animosity. I think folks are weighing in on the process. I, of course, there are, there are a lot of opinions out there. I'm not sure it, it rises to the level of animosity. That's a fairly strong word that I would not choose. In fact, that word probably separates us more than, than we want it to. I think we all have a stake in, in our community, and all the stakeholders, residents, businesses... I think we all have a stake in, in our community and all the stakeholders, residents, businesses, seniors, young people, teachers, police, everybody has a stake in the community. I've spent my whole life trying to work with people in the law, in my practice, with my clients, with my family, with my wife. That is what brings me to run for city council. I believe I have the strength and frankly, the humility that, that is needed to work with people of all persuasions, all backgrounds, all political views. I've had a history of that throughout my life. But really fundamentally, and most importantly for you folks who want to know, I did that exactly in Calistoga. There, I was on the, the council there for four years, and we had a whole variety of people from different views. And we had to work to collaborate, to work together, to reduce tensions in the community, to bring the community together. I did that with Mayor Mario Colagari, Rose Beck, Rose Dunford, the owner of, of the Calistoga Inn, all these folks had different political persuasions. And so I came together with them, worked with them, to collaborate with them to solve problems. And that's really what it's going to take, somebody who can bridge the gap between the various alliances or tribes, or whatever you want to call it in, in St. Helena. We really need to come together, and I'm the person, I think, who's best suited to do that. I've done that throughout my life in law, business, government, family, church, wherever it is, that's, that's where I've done that. Now, I say shaking heads here, that I don't really, maybe I haven't gotten that question accurate, I hope, hope I have. I was seeing like, okay, I, I apologize. The question was difficult for me because it was a little convoluted, but I think I got the, the intent. Really, it's about personal relationships. The core value for me through all my life is respecting the dignity of each person. And if you can do that in policy, government, in all the decisions you make, and you become more inviting to people, you can get a lot done in life. And that's what I'm committed to do on the St. Helena City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scalotti?
Yes, and again, so the question really pertains to how can we coexist in a place where, where, where the wine industry absolutely is our lifeblood, and how do we coexist? Right? Again, I, I-
I can reread it if you wish?
Please, but I haven't had to ask for that yet.
That's okay, no, it's fine. The St. Helena's economy is dependent upon and influenced by the wine industry and tourism. There seems to be a growing sentiment of drawing a line in the sand between tourism and quality of life. The chamber believes not only that these can successfully coexist, but that it is crucial to find that common ground for St. Helena's economic viability. How do you intend to change the discourse from animosity to collaborative?
Okay. Yeah, it is, it is, it's a very good question because while I also don't think there's necessarily animosity, I think that, you know, when my family came here 100 years ago, we were migrant, we were the migrant farmers, we were the Italians, you know, we lived on Tanner Street and, you know, and that, you know, and, and we were, and, and that's, we, we worked in the fields and everything, and my grandfather ended up, you know, farming for his brother-in-law, Otto Behringer, and developing those ranches and, and really living the daily lifeblood of farming in the Napa Valley, in St. Helena. And so I've never forgotten those stories. And, and we have probably the greatest natural resource in our ability to produce world-class wine that, that is such a luxury, that, that is such a blessing, that it's almost unfathomable that we get to live here. So there is absolutely no difference to me between what we do on Main Street versus how we're integrated with the wine industry. We would not exist without the wine industry. We would be San Jose because it's just some sunshine and it's the California climate. So as, as it pertains to, you know, some comments from community members that don't like the influence of the wine business, well, I mean, Fairfield's got plenty of room, and it's still the sunshine, and it's still California. You know, we are the hub of the American wine business, and it's a privilege, and it's also a huge responsibility. So I think that everyone lives here because they, they embrace that, that idea, that, that lifestyle, that sentiment. And, and people that are coming to visit here wish they could live here. So when I, when I'm in my car and, and there's traffic and I get mad, I'm like, wait a second, pinch, I live in St. Helena? Yes! You know, so like, let's just bring it back to what the reality is here. There's always going to be people bickering about traffic and problems and yada, yada. We live in St. Helena, California. Like, let's deal with it. All right? So that's the good news. I don't think there's necessarily a line in the sand, I think it comes, it comes down to, you know, not in my backyard, and we all have to just get along and learn to make compromises where we need to. All right? I, I think that the future is only bright for St. Helena. We're going to have, we've got an amazing brain power in St. Helena, there's an amazing amount of wealth in, in industry and contribution and charity. And so this combination of things puts us in an incredible position, and we just need more time to properly execute in this pathway that we're leading to with new revenue streams and with an improved quality of life. Imagine that, improving the quality of life we already have. I mean, it's almost just comical. But, but yeah, so that we can make life even better for our citizenry. And I'm, I'm just so excited that I've gotten to do it for two years and I want to do it for four more.
Thank you, Councilmember Scalotti. Councilmember White, your, your closing answer?
Yeah, this was, I mean, kind of tough, but not. I mean, I really believe that, that our community is one unit and, and it's, it's the citizens, it's, it's the businesses, and it's our visitors. And I think the key to actually pulling everybody together is education. I don't think it's an animosity either, I think it's more of a fear, a fear of the unknown. I mean, we've got, you know, a fear of change, a fear of limited resources, we fear the traffic congestion, and, and our limited, our limited housing stock. And we also, I think, you know, besides confronting those fears and educating ourselves as to how to deal with them, we also need to educate everybody about what the reality is. And the realities are that we, we need to fix our roads and we need to, we need to have sidewalks that are safe and passable, and we need to have safe routes for our children. We also need to maintain and increase our water supply, and we need our sewer system to be adequate, and we also need to maintain our public facilities and, and to provide police protection and fire protection. We need to educate everybody in, in the town together to realize what we have, I mean, and what we, what we actually need. And then we also, you know, need to, to take a look at what the, what the solutions are. I, I've lived here for 50 years in St. Helena, and we have gone from a small agrarian, middle-class community to what we see today, which is pretty different. I mean, most of the parents of my friends when I was growing up, they worked at Mare Island, or they worked at Kaiser Steel, or they worked in the fields. I mean, they were the, the field workers. So I think through proper planning and implementation of when we get the general plan finished and we put together our, our economic strategy, those are the things that, if we can get rid of the anxiety and the, and the mystery that, that surrounds us every time we start talking about a different project or something, you know, those are, that's what's going to bring us together. I don't think there's anybody that lives here or works here that doesn't love the way the city is right now. And, and it was the same 15 years ago, was the same 30 years ago. Everybody loved the town the way it was, but it's changed, and it keeps changing, and it has to evolve. So I think, you know, as, as a community, and if we all look at each other as, as part of it, that the solutions are going to come.
Thank you very much. This concludes the 2014 mayoral and councilmember candidates' debate. On behalf of the St. Helena Chamber of Commerce, we thank the candidates and the community for your participation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you to the chamber.[1718.35]